Yeah.
Alrighty, good evening. This is Tuesday, May fourteenth, oh my gosh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Town of Brooklyn Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks will be able to see you. That unfortunate Bruins T-shirt you decided to wear or anything else you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Everything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Um, aye.
Uh, Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty-one P M. Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Special information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Brooklyn website. Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the general public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait till you yield the floor, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to encourage engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Alrighty.
Thank you. May I make one more extraneous comment?
Absolutely.
Your Bruins T-shirt reminded me that a couple of days ago, my nephew, who is bringing his young family up to Boston, said, I've rented a room in the courtyard north station. Is that a safe neighborhood? And I and I wrote back to say, it's a safe neighborhood unless there's a Bruins game, and they lost. But you don't have to worry about that in July.
That is true.
Yeah.
Well, it's one nothing right now, so in favor of the Bruins.
All right.
Yep. So.
Are you a hockey person, Tom?
I'm a sports person. So right now I'm in my glory because every night there's something on.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I would not object if you moved this meeting along promptly so you could return to the game.
That's that's a very nice suggestion. I think we'll take that up. So to that end, do we have a motion on accepting the minutes from the last meeting we had?
So moot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other administrative matters that Mr. Jay would like to share with the rest of us?
No, we got our signed documents off to their rightful owners and.
Did we get a um, a Form A and a check with that last A and R we signed?
Ooh, I don't know about the check.
I gave it to Eloise.
We did get a Form A.
You got a Form A.
I had it, but do we need to sign that too? Because I don't think we saw.
Oh, that one. We got a check from the the Ronnie Wheeler property, and I gave that to Eloise.
Yeah.
That was the first one we signed.
Correct.
Do you know that two people this week have asked me about putting in a driving range there?
Really?
Yep. Which now that the property is divided, I don't think can happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that
Two separate people.
Divided can be put together, so yeah.
Well, sure. But they'd have to be willing to buy the whole thing.
Yeah, right.
Huh.
See, I was talking to.
Well, wait, but wait.
Yeah.
Let's say that someone wanted to build a house on the buildable pieces, right? Like, there's a piece on Whitney and there's, the cottage is for sale, almost like it's the cottage. Let's say that that those sold independently and someone managed to lease, create a lease agreement to to lease the protected CR land in the back. So all those people would have revenue. Um, why couldn't they go ahead and and put a driving range on the leased land?
They definitely could.
Yeah. And if I was, I mean, granted, someone may say, I don't want this in my backyard, but like the person on Whitney wouldn't even know. The person in the cottage might be in a predicament where income, additional income would be helpful. Um, and then there's the the essentially the third piece that could be another house. Interesting, huh?
What do you what do you do for access? And then is it?
Well, they use the access they've got now. I mean, that.
Right, because the the corner lot, the corner uh, on the rotary is still is where the, you know, the building would be for the driving range.
Well, the where the building for the driving range is now would be where the building for the driving range is. So they could, if they bought that parcel, they could go ahead. Yeah, huh.
Yep.
Isn't that interesting? Two people in one week.
It's separate, like completely separate. Because I asked the second one, I was like, hey, wait a minute, are you working with so and so? And they're like, no.
Uh, why, why? Why did they come to you? The Conservation Commission big golfers or something?
I think because of the CR.
Uh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep.
Interesting.
But let's see where you what property would wouldn't have a house on it that would give you access to the back forty?
Yeah. They could sell, they could sell air rights unless somebody like really shagged it right along the.
Yeah. But essentially, you just lease the land from the other owners and put the driving range back on it.
Hmm.
Yeah, if they were willing to do that. And I mean, it it certainly makes the whole thing a little bit more um difficult to get going.
Oh, yeah. But you'd, so you'd end up with one new house on Whitney because that lot's for sale. And then you'd end up with so lot
Four.
Four would have access on Whitney and 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 the house would be built there. They wouldn't even know anything was going on.
No, the other way around. Lot four.
Yeah.
Oh, am I backwards?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Lot four's got frontage on Whitney. Right. And then the cottage is on lot two. No, where is the cottage?
Three.
The cottage is on lot three.
Yep.
Yeah, so the cottage is on lot three. Someone could tuck a house into lot two because they'd have to build between the cottage and the main house.
Yeah, right.
And then someone would pick up. So lot four is the one. Yeah, see, that's tricky. Lot four is the one with the driving range building on it, huh?
Yeah, you'd have to have at least air rights there, yeah.
Yeah.
And and I would think lot four would be a desirable lot to build on Whitney Street, so.
Interesting. Well, you know what? People put one plan out, and if the situation changed and there are different opportunities, it wouldn't be the first time that we redid an A and R.
Yeah. Cool.
Ricky Marshall told me that that property had dropped to six hundred K this week, but I looked on Zillow and it was still at, what is it, a million or something?
Well, it's subdivided now. You mean, still all as one?
Right, because there's 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 separate, right?
Right.
Well, no, I mean, I would expect that, actually, I would expect that if they're selling the whole chunk of property and they now have on record the subdivision, it might increase in value. That's so that's odd.
Although they were asking them, what, one?
Like one point one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe one of them is more than the others for some reason.
I mean, the the there's two houses, so that's gonna add something. Anyway, um, I have two other things. One is um, the Bonazzoli family is working with a group that has interested in working with OR, Organization for the Assabett River, right? Is that?
It's OR is um, I don't remember.
That's exactly it.
And so.
Organization for the Assabett River, yeah.
They want to um, do something about the dam at Wheeler Pond and and they, so Kristen wrote and said, she wrote to Conservation Planning Board and Highway, I guess, saying, is anybody interested in meeting with the Bonazzoli family in order to talk about what they're proposing? Um.
They're also working with the they're working with a group out of Cambridge called Interfluv. And they're actually the ones who helped them prepare the documents for the grant, which they have received.
So has conservation looked specifically at any plan proposed for what they would do?
Yep, it was a couple of years ago at this point, but they wanted, they want to remove the dam.
So the whole dam?
Yeah.
So the whole, the dam is.
Damn thing, actually, yes.
The dam was is
It's a pretty big dam.
Is three hundred years old.
Right.
And the next dam on the street is the is the embankment for the for Lower Pleasant Street.
Yeah, I don't. Did they explain why they would have to remove the whole dam and as opposed to just the two spillways?
Maybe. It was, like I said, it was several years ago at this point.
Yeah.
What's the reason we're doing that anyways?
I because.
Because it's 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 falling down. And it's it's on the state's list of hazardous dams.
Oh, because it's a break.
The dam between the two spillways, wha- what is falling down? I mean, that's just a stone wall with, you know, earth on both sides that.
Right. Now, tell me the spillways that are that are under undercut at this point, yeah.
It seems like if you remove the dam, then the road becomes the dam.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. We're the second dam, yeah.
So why? Why? Why do that?
I think I think if we want something actionable tonight and given the Chairman's pledge to make this prompt, I think we could go on record as saying that to have a multi-disciplinary task force from the town, including Planning Board, Conservation, Highway, whatever, should be appointed to look at this.
Yeah, and that's what Kristen has done. She's reached out and said, does someone from Highway, Planning Board and Conservation want to meet with the parties? And
Yeah.
I said I'd be happy to sit in, um.
Totally. I mean, we could have a as many as one other member at any given meeting to join you, so.
Right. Well, I'll I'll make sure to wear my conservation hat, so I won't be a planning board member.
There you go. Well, it's just that it's for well, over a hundred years of its existence, our family owned it and I I look at it as historically significant if if there's no re, I mean, I can see taking the spillways out and eliminating all that, but I don't understand why the whole length of must be three hundred feet of dam.
Yeah, and what would you replace the spillways with? Because otherwise, where's that water gonna go?
Well, I think they're trying to open it up for so it's not restrictive for.
Correct. They're trying to draw it down.
Yeah.
To in.
So in other words, to make a channel with a bridge presumably that would go under the the road.
I mean, it's almost.
To make it a stream again instead of a pond.
If you look at it, a lot of the times of the year now, it is just a channel.
Yes, it is.
Built it in.
So what is it?
Part of me that wonders why we don't just let nature take its course because it's gonna silt in and you're gonna end up with a channel.
Yeah.
In fifty years or whatever and not have to spend any money on it, you know?
Did we get the proper permits when they installed that dam? Well, we're obligated to remove it because it's.
They had.
Well, which is why the Bonazzoli, the Bonazzoli family has tried to donate that property to conservation at least three times.
Yeah.
And um, you know, we would just then be taking on the liability because the dam has been labeled in poor condition by the state for the whole time I've been on the commission.
Yeah. And the other thing I've always thought about that is yeah, we're not talking about the Johnstown flood here. That there's there's nothing between there and the Assabett River that it seems to me could conceivably be damaged by this, but.
The public gardens, maybe, or?
Uh, well, I mean, of course, with with the two Suasko projects, the Ross Dam and the Brewer Brook Dam, that alleviated the problem significantly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did flood. The road washed out, you know, but um, if the dam isn't there for a substantial part of where the road is, the it seems like the road becomes the obstacle, so I don't. Anyway.
I'll have to walk it with you sometime. I've only seen it on paper.
Sure, come on down.
Yeah, yeah. No, I I I went fishing there many times with Sam when he was young, so that's why I remember the uh, but um, no, I think may I suggest that we have a motion in support of the proposal that Planning Board appoint a member and that that be Tim to uh, to re, to review this uh project as it goes on.
And I'll let you all know when the meeting is, so if somebody else wants to go along, um, they can.
Yep. Yep, and um, well, and let me um, let me add one thing to the motion and that um Carolyn will not we we request that Carolyn will not act as a member of the Planning Board with respect to her attendance and anything.
Good.
Second.
I was gonna say, can I second that if I'm?
He already did it. No, no problem.
So we get a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for being the uh delegate.
My other uh topic is mall related, and we can talk about that later because I see Jane's here and.
Alright, so we should probably take up Jane because we're bumping up on eight o'clock and then we'll circle back and do the workshop recap.
Sure.
Righty.
Here she comes.
Promote Jane, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, Jane. Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me.
Hi, Jane.
Hello. So we've been uh talking about applying for the funding for the comprehensive zoning update. Um, we do have one deadline for the community one stop coming up on June fifth, so if that's the route that the board prefers to go, um, we need to get working on that application really soon. Uh, the other option was uh E E A or the um Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Normally, they would have released um that application by now. They have not. So we'd have a little more time, and so I wanted to talk about uh what the differences are between the two so that you can make an informed decision. Um, with E E A, it does require a twenty-five percent match. Um, however, it is a much more likely option of getting funding. Um, we have gotten, I believe, just about every application we have submitted. Uh, what we have been asking communities to do, we can help write it, but if the community will will actually submit the application in their name, then I think it looks better for the community when you're just submitting one application rather than C M R P C submitting twelve of them. It's almost like we're competing against ourselves, so we want the towns to have a better chance. Um, the other option under the one stop, uh, we did get some feedback from the state on the um expression of interest, which was just a very preliminary narrative about what the town is proposing to do. Um, and there are two different categories. They said the town would qualify to apply under. One would be the Rural Development Fund and the other one was the urban something fund, which I was surprised to see urban with Berlin, so. So, um, and then Kristen got an email um a few days ago from uh, the rural, uh, it used to be Senator Goby's office? Or it is Senator Goby's? Nope, it was Senator Goby's. Now she's with the Rural um Affairs or Rural Development. And they are offering one-on-one um assistance to help um, give you guidance for the one-stop application for the Rural Development Fund. Um, and so that is tentatively scheduled for tomorrow. If the board decides that E E A is a better alternative, we can cancel that meeting. Um, the one-stop has become really competitive. And technically, it does not require a match. However, if you provide at least a ten percent match, um, the town will score additional points on the application. So I mean, applications have to be just really spot on to be so competitive with all these other towns. So I think we talked last time about um different sources of uh, funding for the match, whether it's um like Kristen's time that she works on it, um, so in kind, your L P A hours, if they're not used, um, uh, cash. And also, um, we may through D L T A be able to bridge the gap on a little bit of it. Uh, we try to do that for several communities. And then um, we should actually keep that meeting tomorrow with Rural Development because I have a question for them. And that is, um, can the D L T A funds that are being used for the zoning diagnostic be used as a match towards the zoning?
Hmm.
Good point.
So that's something that we don't have an answer for yet. So, yeah, we should probably keep that meeting so we can ask that.
Does that be helpful to know in regard to any of the towns that you might apply for over time?
Right, right. So that was the basic information about the two options. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions or see if people have a
Go ahead, sorry.
Feeling one way or the other.
The twenty-five percent match, what does that equate to in dollars roughly?
So we would be looking at um, I think I had another email where I actually included those numbers.
I think I seem to remember seeing something.
Last time we said.
Was it around ten K?
Cost was sixty-two five. And twenty-two twelve K.
Normally for um zoning updates, if we have the um, I found it. If we have the zoning diagnostic as part of the update, it's sixty-two five. And so the match would be twelve thousand five hundred. But seeing we're already doing the diagnostic with D L T A, it would bring the the cost for the actual zoning update down to around fifty-five thousand dollars. I haven't worked out the entire budget, but I just subtracted um most of what would be uh what the cost for the diagnostic is, which would bring the grant amount down to forty-four thousand and the match to eleven thousand. So sorry. No, that 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 would be E E A, I'm sorry. Um, with Community One Stop, the grant could be forty-nine five and the match would be fifty-five hundred. Sorry.
So with E E A, um, you you feel there's a high likelihood that we would be able to proceed?
Yes.
Whereas um with Rural Development, if our odds are lower, do you find that towns go back multiple times and eventually get it just because they feel sorry for the town at the third try or?
Um, or they put extra effort into the application the next year.
Okay.
The one really good thing that Berlin has going for it is that you have such a high um affordable housing rate that you're at the seventeen or sixteen or seven percent um S H I, which I, and the angle I was gonna take was that not only do you want to update to be, you know, to remove any um conflicts within the bylaws or with other documents like the subdivision regs um, or to address any changes to mass law, but as a town who has really gone above and beyond to get that high S H I, that you're interested in additional things like cottage communities and A D U's and you want to implement these things into your zoning bylaws, because right now the number one thing across the state is housing.
Yeah, so you think that would really help us in in an application to rural development then?
Um, are you thinking it could be a double-edged sword? Because I'm thinking you've proven that you're successful and Berlin is like the poster child for meeting those rates or exceeding the rates and to say that Berlin wants to go even above and beyond that, I would think would be applauded.
I would.
I like that. I like that.
Uh, I like that too. So it there's when when did the when did the decisions get made for these two in relation to one another?
So we're really surprised that, oh, both around the fall sometime, October, November, usually.
So the problem with applying to both is just the extra work?
Yeah.
In putting the applications together?
Yeah.
That was gonna be my question.
So there's not a lot of it it's not copy and paste from one to the other. It's a a unique process.
It is. You, I think you can use some of the text, but you might have to massage it a little to fit the other one better. And we would also be asking um to sign an M O U with the town. I know there were a couple of towns we uh, did the applications last year and then they went and contracted with somebody else, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We wouldn't do you that way.
Holy man. Well, I mean, we're I look at it and we're in the position to have eleven thousand dollars.
All right, well, that's my other question. Do we have the money?
Yeah. We just we just appropriated fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, that's true.
I mean.
I actually read that.
So what we're saying is that this effort is is all tied in with with our master plan. That that the rewriting of the zoning is in response to what parts of the master plan have have argued we needed to change, and so it's integrated and we're comfortable using that master plan money to match um, this effort. Um, so, I mean, the momentum that we will be. The momentum that we will be building with your work. To me argues that we, you know, we ought to just keep right on going, and if the likelihood of getting the EEA is greater than. Dedicate the eleven and say, let's go. I mean, that's why the money's there. It's.
Right.
To get this stuff happening, so. I mean, we've done well with housing. We've done well with open space and rec with those plans. Um. There's other parts of the. Master plan work that we'd wanna do, but I mean, obviously, if we could get the zone and bylaws updated, um. That would be big time. I mean, it's been twenty-five years, so it's been thirty years almost. It's ninety-six. Yeah.
So not to throw a wrench into the, we just got fifteen thousand dollars, but we don't actually get that money until. July first.
Right.
Okay, just.
And the awards.
Pointing it out there.
The awards wouldn't be announced until later in this year, so the project wouldn't start until after the first of the year. Or after you act, the town actually contracts with the state.
So we're good with that. Yeah.
Just pointing it out.
Yeah, that's good.
And we do have some other master plan money that. Would still allow us. If, you know, we there were other additional pieces that we wanted to keep working on, um. We'd we'd have the capacity to do that. And that means you don't have to do anything for June fifth, huh?
No.
Applications for other towns.
One stop is June fifth, right?
One stop is, yep, got it backwards.
Yeah. So why do you think they haven't sent out their notice? EEA.
I don't know. Usually it closes by the end of May. So we're really puzzled as to why it hasn't opened yet. I'll make a note to check on that tomorrow.
Do you do you do you think that the meeting tomorrow will? Sort of confirm your notion that. We would be looked at positively because of the position we are with housing in general. And that the case would be made that, I mean, will they will they won't tip their hat at all as to?
Probably not, but it would be good to try to gauge their reaction and responses.
Right.
But the meeting tomorrow is with the one-stop people, correct?
Yeah, for the Rural Development Fund.
So I'm, you want a motion to?
Please.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we pursue the EEA grant and assume that. Uh, a twenty-five percent match would be necessary and that we'd use. Some of our master plan money to accommodate that.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Do we wanna put some godrails around how much we're gonna spend or? We've got an estimate of twelve-five. Is that we can't compete with that or?
It's actually eleven, right?
Eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven.
Right.
I mean.
We could say not to exceed fifteen thousand or that or or let's let's say. Let us just say the estimate at the high end, twelve thousand, not to exceed twelve thousand.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Twelve-five, which was the high? Okay.
Yeah, and CMRPC, you understand, we only have fifteen thousand dollars to work with.
Right, and then we can use the LPA hours um that the town gets unless there's another project you had in mind for that. Uh, that's usually around nine hundred dollars, and as I mentioned, we can use uh Kristen's hours that she spends working on. Um, reviewing it or commenting on the work that we're doing. I don't know if she would attend the meetings for it. Or if she'll leave it up to the planning board to to work on.
Yeah, as long as you understand what we're voting here and what's coming to you yet.
I mean. I'd be inclined to. Forgo using the. The LPA on.
Yeah, I I think I think uh I think what you were just saying was if. It goes over your estimate, which we're voting tonight. You might be able to use that, and I would just say what we're voting tonight. Is what we're voting tonight, and if you are gonna tap into other hours, we'd expect you to talk to us about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Very good. Understood. Alright.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the amended one amended motion. That includes the uh not to exceed amount. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Uh, Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Tim will update you on um any news regarding that.
Good.
Have a great evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Tom Sanford, can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may.
Update on the Bruins score?
One-nothing, still the Bruins, second period.
Okay, we can we can proceed.
Well, last night.
So moving right along, we're gonna go back to uh the ADU workshop recap.
Let me uh. Admit this in here, I thought it was Friday and not Monday of this week, and I wasn't able to attend it, which. I'm very sorry for because I think it's an important element. Of what we need to approach. I don't know if anybody else did.
I didn't.
Is it recorded?
I'll find out if it was recorded.
Yeah, my my apologies. I've um. Had um. Some increased health issues and work has been uh. Very demanding, and I had in my mind that it was Friday, and I realized when I saw the. Agenda that I had already missed it.
Hmm, Mr. Sherman, I I move that we make him watch the video twice and read.
I'm happy to watch the video twice if it's available. And give a report, but let's see what.
In a chicken suit.
You know what? I I think you need to wear the chicken suit because of your description. Of the sign by law.
That was to get people's attention so they'd vote for it.
You know what?
Worked.
Yeah.
It it was still incorrect and you should still wear the kitchen suit, the chicken suit, but uh. Anyway, uh, I did look in the closet. It's gone anyway, so don't worry about it.
I'll ask if if it was taped. I'll find out.
If you would, that'd be great, because I do think. All of the the just previous discussion, and if we keep working on. Ways to provide. Reasonable housing. Serving public health. And given the fact that we have. Pretty large lots and, you know, the ability to do. Ancillary. Structures, it it does seem to me to be promising and and a very interesting thing to look at, so I'm very sorry I missed that.
I'd like to know.
It may have more potential than cottage housing.
When you do this in a rural community, what do you do about the leaching field, septic system?
Well, I think I think I think what it is is. Leach fields are in accordance with bedrooms, so you have a leach field for. Four bedrooms, but you have a three-bedroom house. Can you do a one-bedroom? Ancillary dwelling.
Wonder how it happens, though. How often does the people over spec it? Does it cost money to make it?
Well, technically, I have a three-bedroom septic with a two-bedroom house, because when we bought the house. There was a third bedroom, but that we turned into a dining room.
Yeah, so I think what I'm saying is I think there are opportunities for that.
Yeah.
There are opportunities for. Current taxpayers, landowners. To realize some value from their property. Obviously, we have to abide by public health regulations and so on. But, you know, you. You look at things like Los Angeles and so on, when when. Obviously, they weren't dealing with getting water and septic from the same lot. But one of the ways that they provided for a whole other layer of uh. Housing was ancillary housing, you know, and so I think. To me, it's one of the most interesting things to look at. It's something that could. Create the opportunity for value from current landowners. And so I think, you know, I I think on the basis of just those two points, it's worth. Going forward with, and I'm sorry, I flubbed the first step of going forward with it.
Well, the good news is we are one of the. Specific towns that said they'd participate in a DLTA effort to deal with accessory dwelling units, so. Think they'll will be swept into some other conversations just in as a result of that.
So may I suggest that I'll come down and get some asparagus from you and uh maybe we can talk about that. And see where we go from there, because I I really don't want that. To dive on the side of the road. I think it's it's an important thing for the community and uh. Our community's availability to provide. Resources for the larger community.
Yeah, and I think Jane clearly is targeted. Um, and focusing on the fact that we're interested in a modification to the zone and. So that accessory dwelling units would be. An easier gain for 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 a lot and. She knows that we're part of that with Victor, because she and Victoria talked to me about the fact that they were excited that Berlin was participating, so. I think the stars are aligned, and I think we can get this, like you say, I think we can get it focused on and done.
And I think we have the the historical uh zoning bylaw, which said that. Ancillary units that were used for family members, caregivers, et cetera. And were established before, I think nineteen ninety-one or whatever, I I forget, but the fact that we have that. To maybe build from that nub and say, okay. What what does nineteen ninety-one make any difference that if you can? Create this on a given property. And satisfy the public health. Then why not?
Right.
Does that mean that if you were to build a new dwelling, you could build it with an ADU also?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Where we'd wanna end up.
Yep.
That instead of it just being latched to existing structures from the past. You could actually build a new housing unit and have an ADU on the lot um right from the start.
And and again, from a public cost point of view, is. Who cares in terms of water supply and septic disposal, whether. The bathrooms in the bedrooms are in one building or another. I I I just don't see the relevance.
Right. Yeah, I mean, obviously, there'd be parameters in terms of lot size and, you know, X, Y, Z, so I mean, we. But I think we could come up with something that the. That would help us. With that dimension that we can't satisfy with the cottage housing part, perhaps, where.
Exactly.
We could really get a unit that would be truly small A affordable. Um, and in some cases, well, I don't. Harder to get them as as if counted on the SHI, but at least. Small A.
We definitely need to also have the conversation, though, about short-term rentals, like Airbnb's. Because the whole point of us going through this exercise is to make more. Places for people to live. Year round.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think.
For people to make money off of renting out the shed.
Yeah, but I think the point. Would be that, I mean, if we were gonna do that. My feeling is we need to address that in terms of a primary residence and an ancillary residence, and we haven't done that.
Alright, I'm just.
No, I think it's a good, it's a good point.
That has to be part of the conversation.
Absolutely. I think it's a good point.
Yeah.
Yep, because we're trying to create. A living environment and not a. You know. Not a rentier environment, yes, absolutely. Yep, totally.
Uh, one to one.
Yeah, I know.
Alright. Okay. So I think. I think we've. We've done that, that the the action is. Can we get a record of what happened, and then can we put this on another agenda? With that input, and if, Tim, you can acquire that, I'm happy to look at that. Material and take the lead on presenting it at the next meeting, okay?
So let me find that out. The other thing is that down the road, um, the housing coordinator, Josephah, and. Perhaps Victoria. Um, would be happy to probably meet with us and.
Yeah.
Share some of their thoughts, um.
Absolutely.
I can find out what that DLTA. What the status of that project is right now and whether they're planning on. Hurting up some of the the towns that are gonna participate into a a smaller discussion at some point, so I'll find that out too.
Alright.
Three to one.
Three to one?
Two.
Oh, two already? And it's over. Huh, the Bruins. Oh, the Bruins are, oh. I'll pep.
Did you say three to one?
No, two, two to one.
Two to one, two, okay.
That was quick. That's good.
Yep.
So at town meeting. The second vote in regard to River Bridge. Was that the land. Could be leased at River Run or sold. And I almost got up and. Tried to make an amendment that would not allow sale until it came to a town meeting. Um, but I didn't. So the selectmen now have the authority to sell. Um, and I think we have to chime in. They're aware of our interest in using some of that land and the water for. Cottage housing potentially. Um, so I think it would probably be wise for us. To say. We we continue to, if we do, if we continue to have that interest. We should um. Make that clear so that the that they don't automatically proceed without a.
I I would make a motion that we express officially to. The selectmen are continuing interest in their disposal of that right.
Is that going to be in a letter form to them or email or how are we going to correspond?
I think it ought to be a letter.
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to create a letter to the select board to tell them of our interest on River Run. And we have a second. Uh, any further discussion? Who's going to craft?
That's what I was gonna say.
Um, if you give me a week, if you give me a week, I could. Circulate.
We've got, I think we've got time.
Yeah, okay.
They're gonna go.
Yeah, they're not hot to do it.
I will circulate a letter. For our review at the next meeting, okay?
Technically, it wouldn't happen until when? Is it effective July one?
No, it's actually effective once the Attorney General certifies the town meeting.
Which may be in July or August, yeah.
Yeah, that may be. Yeah, that may be a while.
Yeah, so we do have a little bit technically.
And I, I mean, I'm, I'm. They're aware of our interests and I'm sure that they contact us, but it just seems like it probably is good for us to go on record.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, I'm happy to prepare a draft letter for review at our next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and.
And a volunteer.
Yeah, which is not part of the vote, I would point out.
No, it's not part of the vote, understood. I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Lot number is it? Do you remember?
Hmm?
It's six A and six B.
Yeah.
Six A and six B.
Okay, I'll ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I, I got a text from my uh. Hong Kong office that they want me to join them as soon as possible. I didn't know what else we have.
I think we're pretty much. We had just timely items, so if there's anybody that has a timely.
Two other quick, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can hang on another ten or fifteen minutes, no problem.
Community Preservation Act Committee is having a forum next Tuesday, the twenty-first, in the eighteen seventy Town Hall. Stuart Saginaw, the executive director of the Community Preservation Coalition is gonna be with us. And he's gonna talk about CPA and its uses and the mechanics and answer questions. And we're gonna serve food at six and the program will start at six thirty, so. If you're looking for a night out, you know, it's a great opportunity, so thank you very much.
We don't have a planning board meeting, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Alright.
Then the other, Kristen emailed and said she's looking for. The development agreement. She's trying to figure out what's allowed in the parking lots of Solomon Pond Mall. She's got requests now for, for buses, and, and while some of this seems like it's past history. Buses, gravel. Fun houses and, and uh circuses, so.
More gravel?
Well, that's the thing, I mean, the gravel issue came up before or material in that project, so.
That's new.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a new request, but I mean, she outlined four. Four issues and all of those have been on the radar, so.
Can you forward that to us for our next meeting?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we already said that the parking lot. Is up to the select board.
Yeah, temporary events is, it, I think what we said was temporary events. They should review in the same way they would, they would do for, for instance, nineteen Carter.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, if it's a bus and it's a lease and it's for, for an extended period of time, that's a different equation then.
Yes.
And, and that would be true of. The storage of gravel there for two year period or whatever.
Yes.
Neither of those.
I think the point is, I think the point is that we need to look at it. One, two, we need to look at whether it's consistent with the zoning bylaw, in other words, it's in industrial use. Or whatever and would be prohibited, and that's three, if it isn't, it's up to them.
So. I mean, because this, I, I think when we were talking before, we decided that there's not a lot of very specific. Language in the overlay or the development agreement that speaks to the parking lot.
And temporary use of it, you know, event use of it, yes.
Right.
Hmm, yes.
Good, alright, so she may wanna come to one of our meetings sometime and chat about this, cuz. I think that may be the best way to resolve it.
I think we'd all love to see her.
Yeah. Um, and I will, let me find that email. Her email is just short and sweet. It didn't say very much, but I'll send it along to everybody.
Alright.
Right now. Solomon Pond Mall. Actually, all she said is, could you please email me the adopted Solomon Pond Mall overlay district? From back in the nineties, we are getting questions as to allowable uses in the parking lot, including buses, dirt. The circus and the funhouse inflatable park.
Well, we've already responded to her in the last of that, haven't we?
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you please send me the adopted Solomon Pond Mall overlay district?
I bet town council's requesting that.
But see, that's. That's the lang- I mean, the overlay district is what's in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
The, the development agreement is a separate document, which I can certainly send her and I think I already have, but there's. The only other thing would be to give them the map.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and, and ask her to come in and talk about it because. I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
Um, if you want. One or two of us to go in and talk to her in detail before. We talk about in a public hearing, that's fine. I'm happy actually to go in.
Yeah, I'll find out, um, but I'll send her the. Well, I'll tell her the zoning is in the zoning bylaw and hasn't.
Yeah.
It's been modified, but that's. The piece that would be used to determine anything anyway, and then the development agreement, I. I know I've copied that recently, cuz I gave you a copy of that, didn't I, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I mean, I've got that floating around. I'll send that to her again. Okay, and then I'll tell her.
Alright.
He wants to chat with us, that'd be great.
Yep, and again, if she wants to refine what the agenda will be at the public meeting. A couple of us could go down and talk to her about it.
Yeah.
Yep. And I'm happy to do that. Somebody just says, tell me, okay?
Sounds good. Say hi, say hi to Hong Kong.
Alrighty. Yeah, sorry, it's transactional, so uh. More urgent than normal. Thank you.
Alright, good night.
Bye bye, good night.
Any other timely issues that we wanna chat about?
At, at some point, and I don't know if it's now, I mean, at some point, we do need to go through. The proposal from the. Metropolitan Air Planning Commission to the City of Marlboro regarding.
Oh, that's right.
The table of uses and all that stuff.
Okay. Any comments about what I sent you all? Yesterday or today about uses?
Yeah, how exciting.
Did I see that?
It was very.
Adult golf.
It said.
Oh.
On the bottom.
I did see that.
They have adult mini golf with a bar and restaurant.
It's just what you want is a bunch of drunk people with sticks with big chunks of metal on the end.
And ball, right.
So there's one, there's one in Boston. That has uh driving range simulator, speaking of driving ranges. Electronic ones.
Yeah.
The same deal, you know, food and drink and everything nearby, and apparently it's very successful.
Well, look.
It's like the Apex Center.
Well, and Dick's Sporting Goods, right, has opened that big new project in Boston now that. Is interactive more than usual.
Yeah, the Prudential Center.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like they got, I mean, it sounds like you could do everything under the sun.
Well, see, I like the one, big one we saw in Connecticut or someplace.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, it's a, maybe a phase we're going through, seems like it works.
Yeah, but it's been twenty years, so what?
If you got a big building like the uh Sears. Building, it's, doesn't require a huge amount of build up probably, you know, you put a mini golfing thing, you know, you don't. You don't want an office building or something where you have to pull the walls and everything out.
Yeah.
It's already set up as a big open space.
Jay, I think you should buy Sears and. Make, make it an indoor mini golf bar.
I'm gonna talk to my brother about it. He's already bought a biker bar, which he's very happy with.
Alright.
Yeah.
There you go.
Where'd he buy?
Flow in the winter, but. And the employees rip off most of the money, but there's some left.
Where is it?
It's the, if, if you've ever been to Motorcycle Week in Laconia.
Oh, so it's up there?
It's the big one there, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, for one week out of the, out of the year, it's just, I don't know, fifty thousand.
Bananas.
Go through it, it makes millions of dollars and then.
Like Sturgis, right?
Wow.
Burns through it.
It's usually the weekend before Father's Day, right?
Oh, I've never been. They won't let me, I got a BMW, you got a Harley.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be welcome.
You can try.
There's a burnout pit that got erected there where you, it's like a concrete. Area where you tie your motorcycle with some chains and you proceed to burn off your tire. Causing all sorts of blue smoke to cover the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, Marcia and her husband, they used to go.
Yeah, I'm sure it's probably a lot of fun if you're into it.
Yeah.
They don't allow horses, so we're not interested.
No, not even iron ones with the BMW logo.
Right. But I do hope that uh with this Marlboro thing, it's gonna include recreational use of those mall buildings.
I think it's the smartest use of that, honestly.
You know, trying to get people back to the malls instead of just for shopping, you can get them back for other purposes.
Right.
Any other timely items? No. So. Wait, somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You got a motion in a second, which is non-discussable. I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries in the affirmative.